Hello and welcome to the Northeast Ohio Media Group Candidate Debates. Thank you for joining us. I am Ray Jablonsky and today we are hosting a debate for the two Bedford School Board seats up for election on November 3rd. There are three candidates in this race. Joining us today is Mr. Jill Messnick, who is one of the challengers, the incumbent Barbara Patterson, and another challenger Terry Honer, they are not here today. So we will let Mr. Messnick explain why he is running for this race and introduce himself. Go ahead.
My name is Joe Messnick and was on the school board for 16 years and literally did a lot of things to fix Bedford City schools. And some of the things that we did really made an enormous improvement in the way we deliver education. But there are also some areas that need to be addressed that I wasn't able to get to when I was on the board before. And primarily, we really need to address the idea of student mobility and also student performance, particularly the children who are coming into Bedford City schools that are behind. And one of the reasons why I'm running for Bedford City schools is really to continue the quality educations that we started. And what's happened is some of the things that took really 23 years to put in, some of that is being reversed. And I think a lot of people don't understand the background and how we got to the position that we did. We need to get that focus back in there. I mean, I have a vision about where Bedford should be. I'm pretty much the architect of numerous processes that were there at Bedford. And we now are 39th out of 800 in value added. But if you look at the test scores, that isn't reflected. And what we need to be able to do is we need to change the way the state measures a school district. And let me just explain that what happens for children who are now coming into the Bedford School District, we test them, we find out that they're someplace between a year and a year and a half behind our students. And the problem is that the state, in three months, includes their scores in our scores. And that's the reason why our scores are so low. And we need to pass a law in Columbus that says that those children coming into the Bedford City School District aren't included in our scores until January the following year. We can fix them in a year, but we can't fix them in three months. So that's the reason why I'm running. We need to continue the quality education that we have, putting together the right team. When I was there, I recruited a number of people. We have a very, I think, a very quality superintendent now with Andrea Seliko, who was there, who was just recently hired. But I think that she would be helped by me being on the school board, particularly with the background. You know, I grew up in Oakwood Village, moved here in 1956, went to Bedford High School, graduated in 1961. I was a state champion in wrestling. I got a scholarship to Purdue University. I was there for four years, graduated in 1965. The first thing I got when I got home was a postcard that said, "You're no longer one deferred, you're 1A." And I started looking for a military program. And I went through the Navy. I spent four years in the Navy. I made two cruises to Vietnam. And after that, I worked for Electronic Basis. And a year later, I came back to the Bedford School District. I worked at Twinsford Bank for eleven and a half years. And from that time on, I've worked for myself. I have my own business. I'm now the editor of Liberty News. Most people have seen me on the campaign trail. And one of the real pleasing things of all the people that I have come in contact with, which has been about 200 people, everybody I have talked to is reading Liberty News, which makes me feel very good about that.
Now, when were you on the school board?
Yeah, I originally got elected in 1989. And I was on there from 1989 to 1997. And then I was reelected in 2003, so I was on from 2004 through 2011. And I was president of the school board, I think, four or five times. I was vice president. And when you're there, I mean, this is all about the kids. I mean, this is really, and I think that's what, when you're really looking at being on the school board, you have to understand that we're running a $60 million operation and it has to be focused on the kids. These kids not only should be getting a good education, but they also, they should be having fun. I mean, these are kids. And not only that, but, you know, and some of them, particularly with the, you know, we have Bearcat Stadium. I was the one who initiated that project. We built that and started it in 1994, is when it was built. And it won the Architectural Award for All Buildings at that time in Ohio. But I knew when we built that, that we would have a lot of good athletes go through there. We've had 12 professional athletes who have come out of Bearcat Stadium. And we're going to have the 13th one, probably with Tybus Powell, who now is playing for Ohio State. But Sean Williams, who was our head football coach, graduated from Bedford as a state champion at track, '93, went to Ohio University, and then played for the Kansas City Chiefs for five years. Then he taught in Cleveland, one of the Cleveland schools. And I'll never forget, Sam Vorders came up to me. I recruited Sam. And Sam said, "We need Sean Williams." I said, "Okay." And he said, "We need him for head football coach." So I went to Sher Mischak and said, "You know, we need to hire Sean Williams." And we did. And Sean has just done a marvelous job with the kids and so has Sam Vorders. I mean, we were really looking at, kids are being kids at Bedford, and I think that's what we really want to have. And the other part of it too is, and I have always believed that we really, when people are working someplace, they should be having fun. And one of the measurables that is really rewarding to me is over the last several years, Bedford City Schools has been ranked as one of the best places to work in Cogga County. And I think that is your survey that you do.
It is a Plain Dealer survey.
Plain Dealer survey. And it comes back and it says that Bedford City Schools is one of the top places for people to work. And that's not by accident. When I got on the school board originally, we made sure that we really hired people that were dedicated to not only educating kids, but also dedicated to being a part of the team. And that really was an important part of it, that we really wanted to have that. When I first got on the board, I recruited Dr. Bedores. And I gave him 24 rules, but one of them was, "I want you to take the management team for a weekend or a couple of days and just way away from the school during the summertime and just team build." And we've done that. And that has just added the enormous part of keeping that core of people at that school because you can't have this turnover. We only had, we now have had four superintendents since 1990, which is rare. I mean, normally, they last about three or four years and they burn out. People like being at Bedford. We had, Dr. Bedores was there for seven years. Marty Matzko was there in finishing a career, but she was there for 11 years. And then Sher Mischak was there for the balance. And he just left last year. And Andrea Seliko just came in. So, but that continuity was really critical in order to be able to create two things, a culture of quality and then also one of a culture of progress. And how do we continue to improve on what we were doing? That was, you know, that was the focus, was to become a world-class school district. And we are. I mean, you know, if you take a look at it, people come to Bedford, they're always amazed at the programs that we have for kids.
I wanted to ask about that too.
Yeah, go ahead.
Because you have, you mentioned that Bedford is a quality school district. People look at, people will judge school districts based mainly, in many cases solely, on test scores. And the test scores show that Bedford is below the state average in math, reading, and science.
Right.
So how do you convince people that, you know, like you say, that Bedford is a better district than they believe?
Yeah, you really have to take a look at the other measurable. The other measurable is your value added. And what we do is from the time that we take, the kids take a test at the beginning of the year, they take a test at the end of the year. And at Bedford, kids are getting two years of education. Now, that's awesome. I mean, the only school district in Cogga County that's higher than us is Solon. And they're not much higher than us, but they're a little bit higher than us. But the reality of it is, you know, from a value-added standpoint, and the other part of it is, you have to take a look at the kids that graduate and what they're doing. And we've got doctors, lawyers, we've got, I mean, scientists. I mean, you take a look at the kids who are graduating from Bedford, they're going off to college, you know, and anybody who is, and I'm talking to people now, particularly campaigning, who have children who have graduated. I say, "You know, how'd they do it?" And they say, "Oh, they did great." And that's the measurable. But the problem is the state of Ohio is really the one who has screwed this thing up. And they literally have. And that's why, you know, there's two laws that I need to get passed. And they, both of them have to do with the state of Ohio, although we may be able to manage something without that. But the first one is that if a, and what we're fighting at Bedford School District is the rentals. Out of 14,000 dwellings, which include houses and apartments, 7,000 of those are rentals. We have three to four evictions a day. It's caused this cycle of poverty, but in addition to that, it's caused us to have anywhere from a 25% to 35% turnover in students. We've, and once I, and to be honest with you, I identified that in 2004. And I said, "Well, that's our problem because we fixed everything else. It's not the schools, it's the communities." And what happened was is that we have 135 apartment complexes with 5,500 units. And I mean, and once you start to understand that what's happening here is something that was established from about 1968 to 1974, that's how long this has been going on. And the thing, but once I knew that that was a problem, then I said, "Look, we've got to test everybody." And the second thing, I said, "You know, where are these kids coming from?" And that was a real surprise because they were coming from Alabama, Georgia, California. They were coming from all over the country. I kind of expected them to be from Maple Heights or Cleveland or East Cleveland. But they weren't. They were from everywhere. And we have 1,200 kids live in the apartments on average. That's what we have. And these kids are coming and going. In fact, we had one student that came and went six times in one year. And the law that we need to get passed is that if a family is evicted and they stay within 30 minutes' drive time of Bedford City Schools or any school, that that child has an option to stay at the school until the end of the school year. That's what has to happen. The second thing that has to happen, and again, this goes with the state of Ohio, they've made rules that say when a child relocates and relocates into the Bedford School District, in three, and again, we're testing these kids, they're a year to a year and a half behind our kids, but in three months, they're included in our scores. So these kids can't pass. That's what's driving our scores down. Now, that's affected property values, it's affected everything. And it's not fair. I mean, it really, when you talk about something that's unfair, that's unfair. Now, with the law that we need to pass is those children who are coming into Bedford City Schools during the school year aren't part of our scores until January the following year. So we have time to fix them. I mean, if you give me a year, a year, anywhere from really a year to fix these kids, we could fix them. But we can't fix them in three months. And one of the programs that we put into Bedford, we put in an alternative educational program called Pilot. I don't know if you're familiar with that yet already?
And go ahead and explain.
Okay. What it is, it's a computerized program. And we utilize it for children who are not up to grade level or they may be in a particular grade and they're not doing as well as they should because they don't have the background or able to go into the Pilot Program. And it tests these kids every day. So they know, the program adjusts to the student. If they don't know something, it backfills. It just continues to do that. And once a student gets up to grade level, then they transition back into the school. Now, those kids who are in the Pilot Program can still, unless they're disciplinary, they can still participate in sports or extracurricular activities so that they still are students. But they have, and they can go, they can accelerate. They can go as fast as they can go to get up to where they need to be able to be. But that's a critical part. And I think that's another part of, you know, being on the school board. And the advantage, I think, that I offer to people, I know everybody. I mean, it's just, there's very few people in there, unless they've been hired in the last six months or something like that. I pretty much know them. And I know all the administrators, they know me. And I think probably the one part that if you talk to any of them, they'll tell you that if I say something's going to happen, they know it happens. That's the part of it that, you know, when I say we're going to build a stadium, people say, "You can't do that." So, oh, there it is.
Well, what do you consider to be the role of a school board member? And how well do you believe that the current board members are living up to that role?
Well, school boards are kind of like a board of directors. And that's really their role. They hire the superintendent and the treasurer, they're the only two people that they hire. They offer guidance and they really have to reflect what the community wants. I mean, that's really what it is. I mean, it was kind of interesting. When I first got on the board, I went to a school board school. And they said, "Well, you know, you've got to work with the other school board members," which you do. "And you have to work with the administration," which you do. But after a while, I raised my hand and I said, "You know, when did you start representing the people?" That was like a foreign concept. That wasn't part of this thing. You know, you represent the people. I mean, they're the ones who elect you, they're the ones who expect you to work at it. And, you know, and I offer something a little bit different than other people because of my background in business. I mean, I, you know, I do a lot of consulting work. And I looked at being on the school board as that. And I could focus on a problem for months and in some cases, for years, to be able to come up with the right solution to that. Whereas administrators just don't have that kind of time. But with my unique background, I mean, just to give an example, I mean, when I got on there, we had a business manager that, we didn't have one vendor from Bedford. I mean, it was incredible. We had three checks that were on the first, the time that we, again, for a very first meeting, for $14,900. Well, $15,000, it should have come back to the board, but three checks for $14,900 is $44,700. And it violates the rules. So I go into the treasurer and said, "Did you approve this?" He said, "No." I said, "Who did?" He said, "Well, the business manager did." So then what I did, I went in and see the business manager. I said, "Did you do this?" He said, "Yes." And I said, "You know, I'm an old Navy officer." I said, "I don't know how this stuff was done before, but it doesn't happen on my watch. If it happens again, I'm coming after you." And he quit, fortunately. Otherwise, I would have got him. But he was a violation of law. And the fact is that he went to another school district, he was fired there. And as I understand that he was fired, you know, I didn't follow him. But, you know, you've got to do stuff that's right.
How well does the school board interact with the community now?
That's an interesting question because, you know, there's, everybody's individual. You know, and I think that you have, one of the things that Phil Stevens did, which I think was a good idea, now, every month, they have a, where they are at the Bedford Falls Tavern, or not Tavern, Cafe, and let people come in and speak to them. And I don't think there's very many that do, but they get one or two people a month. But the fact that they're there and doing that, I think, is a good idea. The other part of it, I mean, we all, you know, if you're on the school board, you're going to interact with people, particularly, I know that Debbie and Tim are pretty much at the events that go on and, you know, people come up and talk to you about it. If they have a problem, you will get calls on the telephone. I was at, I'm not on the board yet, but I was over at the Longhorn and they recognized me right away. So we have a problem. I want to discuss that problem. I said, "Well, I'm not quite there yet, but I will be, hopefully." But you solve people's problems. I mean, that's what you do. You solve the kids' problems. This thing is all about the kids. I mean, if you don't focus on the children and what's going on with them, because that relates, that only to them, but to their parents and to the communities ultimately. But, you know, you want to make sure, and I'll tell you, in campaigning right now, the two issues that people are really concerned about, number one is the education and number two is they're concerned about what the taxes are going to be. I mean, there's a lot of people that right now are not well off financially. And, you know, a lot of them are underwater and, you know, and all of a sudden, the school increases the taxes by $300 or $400, that's selling a lot, but $300 or $400 a half or whatever is a lot for some people. And, you know, and the thing, again, this goes back to what I try to do. And just to give you an example, we had leaky roofs when I first got on the board in '89. And we had a board member saying, "You know, we need to have leaky roofs in order to show need." I said, "This is nuts. You fix the roofs, you tell the people what we did." And we did. Anyway, we had, the other business manager left. Jerry Zagrebik became our new business manager. And I told Jerry, I said, "You need to hire some consultants, take a look at our roofs." We had 840,000 square feet of roof, only 10% of that had been insulated. By 1998, we were fully insulated. We were saving $350,000 a year just on natural gas. So $1 million every three years, it was just going up through the ceiling. But we've done a lot of stuff like that. I mean, we cut out programs that, we had very few people. We've partnered with other school districts. We've partnered with Orange, partnered with Maple Heights, and some other school districts where we were able to take kids and get a classroom full of kids rather than having, you know, where you have four kids in a classroom. You just, you can't justify the expense on four kids, particularly unless it's something that is really a critical issue. And we didn't have anything that was that critical. But the other part of it was that we did it at Bedford, and I have to give Sher Mischak a lot of credit on that, was we wound up with an arrangement with Lorraine Community College so that our kids with sufficient grades could get literally about 38 college credit hours from Lorraine Community College, which were transferable to any state college in Ohio. So, I mean, that was really a pretty good thing that, and we had a lot of kids that took advantage of that. They had, you know, we also had the, and when I first got on the board, we put in the advanced placement courses. We didn't have a lot of that when I got on the board before that my kids weren't able to get that. Once I got on the board, they were able to do that. But again, you know, I've had a lot of education and I know what good educators are and I know what poor educators are and what good programs are. You need to have stuff that's relevant. You need to be able to have these kids learn and be able to take it with them when they leave here so that they can be productive citizens. I mean, that's what it's all about.
Well, in that vein, what's, there's debates in some districts, you know, from time to time with budget concerns, should we eliminate athletics? Should we eliminate, you know, arts and humanities courses? If you, if, and I know the Bedford School District's in a pretty good financial situation now, but let's say that they, you know, things deteriorate and you're forced into a situation where you have to choose between eliminating an athletics program or going to pay-to-play or eliminating humanities courses or arts classes, what would you put on the chopping block first?
Well, this is the way you do it. I mean, what happened, you have to look at this differently than that. When I got on the board originally, I recruited Dr. Bedores. I told him, I said, "We have to grant abatements." He said, "We can't do that." I said, "Why not?" And he said, "We need the money." I said, "You know what? We graduate 300 kids a year out of this school. And if we don't create jobs, you aren't going, you know, what are we doing?" You've got to work with the communities now. You know, Mayor Gotchuk, who was in Oakwood Village, Gary and I throw snowballs at each other. We've been lifelong friends. Gary is an enormously bright person. I mean, when he graduated '62 from Bedford, he went to Case in Physics. And he's just a very bright guy. Well, he became the mayor and Gary was concerned about the school board because the school board grants the abatements. And what happened was, again, educated everybody on the board about what we're doing, including Dr. Bedores. And he really became a convert pretty quickly. There wasn't very much convincing once you understood that you had to create jobs was part of our function. So I went to Gary and I said, "You know, don't worry about the school board. So you could go out and negotiate whatever deals you want to negotiate, do it." And he did. But I said, "We're also going to share the city income tax." Because I was looking for an alternative way for funding. So we were the first school district anywhere in the United States to share city income tags with the community.
Okay. Which is wonderful.
So we raise more money. We don't have, we don't cut stuff out. We raise more money. We create more jobs.
Okay. But if you're in a situation though where you have to...
We'll never be there.
Well, but let's say it doesn't happen.
Right. It's never going to happen, not in my community. Because we're going to work, you know, you have to understand the Bedford School District, and most people just don't understand the resources that we have. First of all, we have two freeways that go right down the middle of us, 480 and 271. But we have something nobody else has. You know what those are? We have three railroads, three railroads. We have one railroad that's a short line that goes out to Solon. We have the main Norfolk Southern Line that goes through, right through Bedford. And then we have a third short line that goes out beyond Kent and goes out that way. And it totally railroads Solon. But the fact is, we have in the Bedford School District, 10 side tracks that are not being utilized right now. Those are worth about a million and a half that need to be put in play. Now, what we have to be able to do from a school board standpoint of view in order to raise more money is we have to talk to our communities and say, "Here's what you've got to do. And we're going to have you do that. We're going to help you facilitate that." That's what we have to be able to do. And the other part of it is, is we have resources at the Bedford City School District that also need to be put in play. I mean, the fact of the matter is that there's a lot of stuff that, you know, and just to give you an idea, when I, when Bob Reed got to be the city manager of Bedford, I went in there and I said, "Bob, do not build houses. And we don't need any more housing in Bedford. We want to create jobs, create jobs, but no more housing." And right away, the first thing they did was turn down Taylor Chair and then they want to put in Cluster Homes. I mean, the fact of the matter is, we, you know, and again, while I'm campaigning, I can't tell you how many vacant houses there are. Now, Bedford Heights has actually done a pretty decent job in repopulating it, but they still have some vacant houses. Bedford's got a lot. And I'm going to tell you, they should have a program where they start to get this thing back. And I understand they do have a program. And I think Mike Malice has been trying to effectively make a difference there. But the reality is, it's not as effective as it needs to be. But part of it is, it's because of the rules from the state of Ohio and how they're treating our scores is what's causing our problem. We need to get that law changed. And I'm going to tell you, there's two things that have to happen. And this is what I'm working on now. I'm president of Rotary, Bedford Rotary, and my goal is to raise $1.2 million to share. And what that money is going, and I've got to, you know, get this approved by the board that we have here. But the thing that has to happen in the Bedford City School District is we have to convert the apartments and condominiums. That's the solution to this. And what happens is if you don't do that, you've created this cycle of poverty in there. But however, if we do that, we can reduce property taxes by 20% forever. That's the solution. It's going to take about seven years. That's what I'm working on. That's the reason why I need to be back on the board again. Because I need to get the laws changed in the state of Ohio. And I also need to get our communities to change their thinking that we've got to be able to take a look at this thing. What's happened is you have, and the other part of this is that 95% of the apartments in the Bedford School District are owned in Dallas and in Chicago. At least, that's where the money is going. The owners are phantoms. We don't know who they are. And the reality of it is, these people are taking $50 million worth of rent and it leaves the school district every year. We convert those into condominiums. That $50 million stays here. We become the Shaker Heights of the '60s. That's how potent the Bedford School District is. But we have to have somebody who understands, "I have the vision. I need to get people now to work with me to get this thing done." We get it done. We change the entire matrix, the economic matrix of what we have. We're never going to give up free football and free arts. I mean, you've got to have that stuff. That's where, take a look at the scholarships we are generating with kids who are coming out of that. Last year, we had six kids going to premium schools on scholarship for football. I mean, you know, you just can't cut that off. And we've had millions of dollars worth of scholarships come out of that stadium. And for somebody to say, "Well, I'm going to have to pay you to play and all that," you know what? We need to fill that stadium up. That's what we need to do. We need to get the people that are living in the Bedford School District come in there. One of the things I want to be able to do, and this is where the $1.2 million comes from, we have an auditorium that sits there. It has 1,200 seats in it. We can pack that thing up. And the fact of the matter is, if I pack that up for 10 weekends, I can generate my[1592.62] my $1 million. That's what I have to do. And I need the Cleveland Plain Dealer to publicize that stuff, and when we start getting these things in motion, where we are able to advertise that stuff in the Plain Dealer and get some publicity on it, Ray. We need you, we need you, Ray, and Carl. I want to mention that Carl Turner's here, too, that he's a...
Let's move on.
Anyway, go ahead.
I want to talk about...
We're not going to give up football or athletics or arts.
Okay, well, that was our main question.
We just aren't going to do it, we're going to come up with another solution, not getting rid of that stuff.
Okay, now, I wanted to ask...
Not on my watch, somebody else's watch maybe.
Not on my watch, okay. With the rash of school violence around the country and horrible situations, do you believe that teachers and faculty members should be armed?
Yes. And I not only think they should be armed, but I think that we should have a sign right on the thing, that our teachers are armed to the teeth, and will shoot anybody and kill anybody that comes in here and tries to do harm to our own or students. I think, you know, this thing about putting a sign on there, that this is a gun-free zone, is an invitation to all those nuts that come in there and try to shoot people. I mean, you just can't do that. And we have to have our people that are, yeah, I mean, to me, you can't, you have to protect yourself. And I'll tell you what, in fact, I just read an, wrote an editorial on it, which will be in every news this next month, but it's on gun control. And the fact of the matter is, the Second Amendment, if you go back to the creation of the Second Amendment, the First Amendment was for freedom of speech, you know, freedom of religion, the freedom of the press, and the very second one, Second Amendment, was the right to bear arms. And the reason is, if you think about this, back then, almost everybody lived on a rural, I mean, they lived on farms. And the fact of the matter is, if you didn't protect it, and the early people, the founders of our country realized, they couldn't protect everybody's house. That's your job and my job, we have to protect our own house. And if you're out in the middle of the frontier, you better have yourself a gun, because otherwise, you're going to have a bear. And I'll tell you, my dad retired to northern Minnesota, back in the woods, and one night, he's watching television from a satellite, and he hears this knocking on the door. He said, "Come on in," and nothing happened. So, you know, here's the rock knocking again, he said, "Come on in." Nothing happened. So he goes to the door, opens up the door, and who's there but a black bear? He went eyeballs, eyeballs with my dad. He said, "Now, get out of here." The bear went running off and it's like, but you know, when you're up in northern Minnesota, you have wolves, you've got bears, and now they have cougars, and they have wolverines. I mean, if you're out in the woods, I mean, you better have yourself, you better have some armor, and otherwise, you could die. I mean, these things are, you know, they're predators. I mean, that's what they do, they kill things. So, I mean, yeah, do we need to, do we need to be protected? We need to protect ourselves, we need to protect our kids, and we need to have people trained. I mean, obviously, you don't just have people carrying an arm around, but they need to be trained, they need to have professional training, and with that, I think they, I have no problem with them being armed.